You want me to wait a minute? Everybody ready? Mike?
Yes.
Mary? Okay, it is 6:05 in the April 14th Durant City Council meeting is now in session. I would like to say first that we want everybody to bear with us because this is something we're not used to doing. So maybe you'll get a few laughs, but maybe you'll learn something. I'd also like to say that on the public hearing section of our agenda, if anyone wishes to respond, you can email Cindy Price at cprice@durant.org. If anyone wishes to email in, you can, I'll repeat that, cprice@durant.org. Now, if everyone would stand, we will have, James Dalton will lead us in our prayer. Thank you, James.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day, the breath of life you give us individually, our health, Father. We lift up our country to you, Father. We lift up those that are ill within our midst. We pray that your healing hand be upon them, Father. Lord, we just prayed you give us wisdom tonight as we go through the city's business, Father. Let us do what is right for all, and we thank you for every good thing. We thank you for where we live, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing while Councilman Danny Sherrill leads in the flag salute. To the flag.
And to the republic, for which it stands, visible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you all very much. If you can zoom and see our council room, it sure looks different than it's ever looked since I can remember. Our clerk will call the roll. Cindy, are you anywhere close?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Councilmember Shear? Councilmember Tomlinson?
Here.
Councilmember Morris?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Here.
Mayor Groby?
Here. Looks like we all here or on TV, so we have a quorum. The first order of business, we have presentations. Our first presentation, and we'll have to do it different this time. We have quite a few employees who will get their certificates and pins, and I'm just going to call the names, and then Cindy, I believe, will make sure they get their certificates and pins.
Yes.
Okay, five-year, five-year service. We have Joshua Mullins with the Police Department. We have Scott Seber, Police Department. Jeffrey Rush, Fire Department. The 10-year pins, Cynthia Price, City Clerk, congratulations, Cindy. Richard Ezel, Police Department. Andrew Piper, Police Department. Joyce Corneliuson, Library. Our 15-year pins, Russell Harkey, Police Department. Rocky McDaniel, Police Department. Kenneth Rogers, Landfield. Darla Smith, Community Development. Jerry Weisner, Waste Water Treatment Plant. Congratulations to all of those who've been here all these years. I think that is a combined total of 130 years of service. Our next item on our agenda is a proclamation declaring April 20th as Fair Housing Month. I don't think I'm going to read it all. I think I'll just hit the high spots unless anyone objects. But the, it is, we do this, I believe, every year, and it is the desire of the City of Durant to recognize those persons or groups who best create an awareness, awareness of the need for fair housing practices, or otherwise promote fair housing practices. Now therefore, our Odin Groby, Mayor of the City of Durant, do hereby proclaim the month April 2020 as Fair Housing Month. Did you get that, Cindy? Or everybody?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Our next item of business is consent items, number two, consent items, A through I. As you all know, you can accept these as one item, one vote, or you can pull out any item and we will vote on it separate. Does anyone wish to pull any item out of the agenda?
I have a question maybe for the City Manager, Tom. But consent item number E, is it the same consideration under administrative 5E?
Yes, sir, it is.
Does it matter where we vote on it, or should we, do we need to vote, I guess, for both, or?
It should actually be in the administrative section.
Well, will we need to vote and eliminate that from consent? Okay, that is number E. We have number E that we've pulled out. Is there any other one to be pulled out? Are there any other questions?
An approval of the consent docket, less item number E.
We have a motion. Who made that motion? Jerry made the motion to approve consent items, less item E. Do we have a second?
Mike Morris, seconds.
We had two seconds.
Okay, I don't care.
Okay, all right. Okay, if no other questions, would we, could we please have a vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Councilmember Shear? Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye. Motion carries. All consent items, less E, have been approved. We will now, I guess, consider, since E is in another part of the agenda, will we need to vote just to, okay. We'll vote on it when we get to that item. Okay, number four is information items. These are various reports. If anyone has any questions, you may ask them at this time. If not, we'll move on. Number five, administration. Consider approval of Resolution 2020-12 to extend the state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, establishing public meeting practices for City Council, Authorities, Trusts, Commissions, Advisory Boards, and Committees of the City of Durant. Limit gatherings, directing the City Manager to not issue permits for events with certain projected attendance, authorizing the City Manager to adjust operations and services in response to COVID-19 as necessary, and delay the municipal court dockets. Is there any discussion on this item, number 5A?
What is the date we're extending this to?
April 30th, the same as the state, yes, sir.
Are there any other questions or discussion?
I move approval of 5A to include the date of April 30th. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it's in the resolution.
It's in the resolution, Jerry. Okay, we have a motion to approve number 5A. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second by Councilman Brittingham. Would the clerk please record the vote?
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is 5B. There will be no action. Numbers 5C. Consider and take action with respect to Resolution 2020-11, approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Durant City Utilities Authority, the authority issuing its utility system and sales tax revenue note, Series 2020, called the note, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the indenture authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding with respect to the state of said note, and approving the proceedings of the authority pertaining to the sale of said note, ratifying, confirming, and approving sales tax agreement by and between the City of Durant, Oklahoma, the city, and the authority pertaining to the year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenues, ratifying, confirming, and approving the lease as amended pertaining to the city's utility systems and containing other provisions related thereto. Is there any discussion on item 5C?
Chris and Alan?
I think it might be appropriate, in the sense, this is a companion item to the item we have on the authority agenda. It probably makes sense to describe what's going on in this meeting. The ordinance, the resolutions you have in front of you, one is for the city. Where on now, we have again, the DCUA resolution. This would approve a proposed financing that we've been out to bid on. I think before we go much further, it might be appropriate to have Chris talk to us about the bid we received and his recommendation, ask, answer any questions we might have.
Sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hear you, Chris. You need to smile out.
Yeah. A lot's changed since we were there, March 10th. We didn't, we didn't, didn't, had never done a Zoom meeting, and it wasn't legal, and didn't think any law was in the works, and here we are, doing all this via the internet. So with all those changes, obviously from the COVID-19, financial systems kind of, people kind of pulled back, and they're processing all the triple P loans, that payroll protection bill. And so a lot of banks are busy working on that and just kind of don't, don't want to lend money. So we've done, I'd say, this is our third note like this in the last week. And on each one of them, the national banks have backed out. Chase, who normally would bid, BB&amp;T out of Carolina, who normally bids, they've all just basically stepped back. So on those, we've gotten one bid from a local bank. And so it's the same thing here. We received one bid from First United. I'd called and talked to John last week, kind of expecting that to be the case. So fortunately, Durant does have a strong local bank that's willing to do this at 3%. It's prepayable after 10 years with a 1% premium. It's a, it's a good rate. I mean, historically speaking, we're still in a low-rate environment, so I mean, I think 3% is a fair rate, and I would recommend you guys accepting it and moving forward with that. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for Chris?
Hey, Chris?
Yep.
As far as your original projections, when we talked about this, how does it change things?
Not a whole, I'm actually, my number run that you guys, it's saying, I'd use, on this note, I'd use 2.75%. So we're a quarter percent higher, so it has pretty minimal impact. I mean, we, I can move principal around a little bit from the front to the back to keep it, keep those payments approximately the same. Or we keep it the same. Once again, a quarter percent. I'd use 275, and we're talking at three now. You know, there's a program, you know, we also talked about the waterboard loan program. And so, you know, if there's a program like that for the streets, which this is largely being used for, you know, we would do that. But in the case, there's not, you know, the only other alternative would be to go out and do a bond issue. And so as it relates to that, I mean, Oklahoma State University sold a bond issue today, and their 912036 maturity, the yield to the, to maturity was 2.745%. So I mean, they had a double A rating, double A minus rating. So I mean, that's, that's not the blended rate, but still, it gives you a pretty good idea. And, you know, to do that, it's a registered security. You have to get, you have to pay an underwriter. You have to pay for a rating to be done. You're under continuing disclosure requirement. So there's, there's a lot of additional costs and reasons that, unless it was very favorable, you know, as it relates to lower rate, you know, I don't think, and we'd have to start, kind of start scratch. There's multiple reasons. I don't, I don't think that's a good alternative at this time either. So I think 3% is a, is a, is a good rate as it relates to kind of what's available in the market.
Chris, I might make one comment just in respect to something you said. Our principal installments are set out on the resolution as we're in the bid packet, so we don't have a lot of latitude to tweak.
Okay. If we needed to, we could adjust it on the waterboard side, but once again, it's a minimal impact.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have a quick comment, please. I've been reading some things on social media that are incorrect about what the 13.2 B will be spent for. And maybe John, give us a quick comment on where we intend for that money to go.
Yes, sir. The intent of that money is to spend $11 million on student improvements and $2 million on water improvements, which was in line with the task force recommendation.
Thank you. That makes it very clear.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
I have a question. I have a question for John, too. This, this is resolution, or we're considering Resolution 2020-11. Is, does it amend, or is it amending Resolution 2020-10? What's the difference?
Well, we've got the 2020-11, if I understand your question, is a resolution on the City Council agenda. We have a companion, we have a companion resolution, which is 2020-10, and that is actually on the Durant City Utilities Authority agenda.
That's correct.
So they are companion resolutions. 2020-10 is the resolution of DCUA authorizing the debt. 2020-11 is City Council, as required by Oklahoma law, they have to approve debt at the City Council level before it can be incurred by the public trust.
Okay, so that's what we're considering under the council. Not only necessary, but it is really doing the same thing as the 2020-10?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
And I'll, I'll have a question on 2020-10.
Okay.
Is it appropriate to ask that now?
Certainly.
On the, okay, and I probably should know, or whatever, but the, for example, the 2020-10 and the previous, I think this was maybe written in 20, or 2006. But anyway, Section 300 of the 2020-10, I'm sorry, I hadn't visited with anybody on this, because I, I kind of discovered it as I was reading through it today. But we, for example, in Section 3, under the sales tax agreement, under the Utilities 2020-10, the, it refers to certain sales tax revenue as security for the note. And we're actually, we're not pledging this as security. This, this sales tax revenue will go directly to servicing the debt. Is that, am I muddy enough to water here? Is there something I'm not understanding?
Now, Jerry, the, the security pledge on this transaction is the same security pledge we have on, on both your loans that are outstanding with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, well as some prior debt that we've incurred. And the utility pledge is water and sewer revenues and 3 cents of sales tax. And one of those pennies is the penny that was extended recently. So we actually are pledging as security or collateral, 3 cents of sales tax and water and sewer revenues, which is the same collateral. You have a large portion of your outstanding debt.
Okay, for the 13.2 that we're.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? Any discussion? If not, do we have a motion?
An approval of 2020-11.
We have a motion for approval. I think, Jerry, did you make the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. If no further discussion, would the clerk please record the vote?
Do you want, Mayor, do you want to name in that motion that where, what banks this is going to be? Does that need to be included in that motion?
Hang on a second. Let me see. Do we have a blank? Did we have a blank in the city resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes. We would need to identify First United as the purchaser of the debt.
I'll amend my motion, make a new, or I'll, I'll amend my motion to approve Resolution 2020-11 with First United Bank of Durant as the lender.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we need to say anything else, Cindy? Did you get it, the, from Jerry?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
I haven't.
Okay.
Cindy, I want to, Cindy, my apologies. And my version has it typed in. I, I didn't, I'd forgotten. Yours didn't.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye. Motion carries. Number D, number 5D. Consideration to accept assistance agreement for $1.5 million from the U.S. Department of Interior Bureau of Reclamation, Water Smart Water and Energy Efficient Grant Program, WEEG, for a citywide MMR smart meter conversion and advanced metering infrastructure project, C-2020-118, Ms. Becker.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. You know, you were telling Chris while we go to smile, when I was watching the March 31st online, it's like, wow, I gotta smile, you know? Anyway, this is a very exciting opportunity for the city. It's going to affect every business and citizen in Durant with new automatic meter readers. And we've been waiting a year. We submitted it in March 2019. So, you know, it's big things. And the OWRB loan will provide the match. And we no longer are required to provide in-kind labor and equipment. The Bureau of Reclamation took that out. They said we didn't need it. We had enough OWRB funding for that. So that will relieve our department heads and staff from having to track all of that for, I mean, we'll do it in code, but for this. So anyway, no other city match, and we will get started as soon as things get back to normal. So we can move forward and approve it.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Becker?
We accept the assistance agreement for one and a half million for Project C-2020-18 before they change their mind.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Are we ready for the vote? We can't turn down 1.5 million.
Absolutely not.
Would the clerk please record the vote?
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye. Motion carries. Yay. Number 5E. Consideration to approve cost for an emergency utility bore completed by W. Brand Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of $20,027.70 for the utility infrastructure improvements necessary to support Tubasek, Durant, Inc. operations. Ms. Becker, again.
Yes. And the, the water and sewer infrastructure that was approved for the Tubasek's project did not include this bore. When the contractor was laying his lines, they determined this issue. It was an OGN-E meter, I believe, that had been laid within the right-of-way, the same area for what was proposed. So it was an emergency, and it was right at Christmas time, end of the year. And it was not presented to Department of Commerce for them to approve it. And so the DIA director at that time said for the contractor to proceed, so it did not delay any of the Tubasek's operations. And so this has been presented to DIA by Lisa Taylor, and she's not able to be here. So she asked that I present. The DIA has approved a recommendation to the council for authority to utilize the 1/4 cent sales tax for this expenditure.
I move approval of the $20,027.70 for the necessary improvements to Tubasek's to be expended from the economic development sales tax.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Would the clerk please record the vote?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure. Was that the Vice Mayor who seconded that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 6A, we're moving into the public hearing section. I'm not real sure if we have anybody that has emailed you, Cindy?
No, I do not have any emails at this time.
Okay, the public hearing is for the closeout of Community Development Block Grant, Economic Development 16802, CDBG-ED16 Grant, C-2016-86 for Infrastructure Improvement Supporting New Job Creations, benefiting the Commercial Metals Company, CMC, facility at 585 Old Highway 70, Oklahoma, Durant, Oklahoma. Old Highway 70 on New Red, Oklahoma. You again.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Okay, this was a phenomenal project for the city with a huge financial investment from CMC. And it was for 1 million dollars from Department of Commerce, and the only match required was the company's private investment. This did not cost the city any funding towards the water, sewer, and roadway improvements. And we actually came in under budget. And the grant was for, like I said, 1 million dollars. And getting to my document, we came in under budget 27,697 dollars and 49 cents. The company actually, for overall cost of investment, it was 274 million, including their building and all impro- or improvements to the property. And the only requirement that Commerce had for the company was for the equipment, because that's something that had not been started at the time of the grant application. So they committed 25 million. However, they did spend 30, 37 million, 452 dollars and 73, 736 dollars, so over what they were asked to commit. And their job commitment for when they, when we had the grant award, they committed to create 168 jobs, with all jobs being offered to low and moderate income persons. They, with the addition of their T-post manufacturing facility, they created 184 jobs for Durant area. So that is 34, about 34 more jobs than the necessary or that was a, that they committed to doing. One thing I need to say, just for the record, is this program for economic development is required to create jobs that are specific for the low and income moderate persons and to improve the community that receives the grant funding. So I want to make sure and say that. And of course, then the financial investment to the community makes a phenomenal impact for us as well. And I think that's all I need to say. And like you said, you gave the address where it's located, and they are still going very strong. And so I did get some more job reports from them for the end of 2019, and so they are still creating, creating jobs.
Do you know if they've been affected by the coronavirus?
I don't know that. I was, you know, I was thinking of that, as well as our other large industries there on Country Club Road.
They still have crews working, I can tell you that. So they're not, nobody's shut down, I don't believe.
Yeah, I haven't heard that at all.
Are there any other questions?
Oh, let me, let me say one thing for the record, too. This grant was funded in the end of our fall 2016. It is a three-year grant. Our ending period was the end of 2019. But because we had 80,000 dollars left over, we wanted to do something with that and not leave all of that on the table. So then Commerce allowed us to do the overlay on McLean Road, because it did directly benefit CMC, Marshall Metals Company. So we were able to get an extension and complete that in January. So, okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? Any other questions? Number A, consideration to accept 16802 CDBG ED 16 project is complete.
And I did send you, which I apologize, you know, this has been crazy trying to work from home, but I did send you the engineer's final inspection of the project that happened of the water, sewer, and some roadway. That happened in June 2017, and then we finished the roadway up before the grant actually was complete. So everything was successfully completed.
Okay, any other questions?
16802 CDBG dash ED 16 project is complete.
We have a motion for number A under public hearing, do we have a second?
Mike Morris seconds.
We have a motion, we have a second. Would the clerk please record the vote?
And I do want to say for the record, I did not get any emails up to this point. So, Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye, motion carries. Item number B, consideration to approve the 16802 CDBG G dash ED 16 project, closeout documents.
You know, you're not supposed to let people sweat. I mean, see, you sweat, but I'm sweating, because I did not get these documents completed in some areas. And they're completed, as far as you know, the financial part, that was all spent with our money left over. The CMC's investment was complete, and the engineer's final inspection report was done, and the section three summary report, that is a requirement that a contractor, if they are targeting low to moderate income resident, uh, employees, which, I mean, they have, they are supposed to, but if they are hiring new, they have to fill out this report. And I do have that from the contractor, and the primary contractor, which was CD Brown. However, I need to insert the engineering costs as well as the materials, because the city did install some of the the water line. So I need to fill out that part of the second page of that. Then the final wage compliance report, and there was a prime contractor, CD Brown, and then a fence company and electric company. CD Brown, all these companies have to submit their payroll to me, and so throughout the entire project. And there are guidelines by the Department of Labor, they have to pay fringe benefits on some of their job classifications. Well, the company, upon my review of the payroll, the company did not pay some of the fringes on the positions that required it, such as the skilled. Issue to each employee. Somebody ask a question? And so I need to, I have to make a list of that to attach with this final wage report. But everything was satisfied, because I do not ask the city to ever write a check or issue a check to a contractor without us having all their payroll in place and to ensure that it meets the federal wage rates issued by Department of Labor. So on that report, I have to provide the list of those. So I think that's all the documents.
So basically, we would be safe to consider B is closed out?
Well, I would respectfully ask if you would please to provide your approval, if you wish, contingent upon me completing the pertinent information, and I will coordinate with the city manager and and Tom to make sure that that is, the missing pieces are are complete.
Make a motion to do what Becca just said.
Jerry made a motion to do what Becca said, as far as make completing this contingent on finishing what she needs to complete.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we, are we ready for the vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye, motion carries.
New business, let me, new business. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, Mayor, I did not catch, who did the second on that? The screen froze.
It was Danny, Danny, it was Councilman Sheriff.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Shear?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brittingham?
Aye.
Mayor Groby?
Aye, we're now adjourned from the city council. It is now six forty-four, and we are now in the Durant City Utilities Authority, part of our agenda. We call the meeting to order. Would the secretary please call the roll?
Trustee Shear?
Here.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Here.
Trustee Morris?
Here.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Yeah.
Chairman Groby?
Here, we're all here, we have a quorum under consent items. We have two items. Does anybody?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Would the secretary please record the vote?
Chairman, could you tell me who gave that motion, please?
Councilman Brittingham made the motion, and Councilman Sheriff said.
Thank you. Trustee Shear?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Aye, but let me add, I think it's happened for Cindy, it's happened for me a couple of times. Byron or someone might check, but we're locking up or freeze, it's going into lockup, and we, I didn't hear the motion either.
Yes.
Discussion, so it's done a couple of times, just in the last couple of minutes. Anyway, I think I voted aye.
Okay, trustee Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Aye.
Chairman Groby?
Aye, motion carries.
Number three, we have information items. If no one has any questions about any of the information items, we'll move to our agenda Have we lost audio?
We can, Mayor, we can still hear you.
Can you all still hear us?
I can hear you.
Yes, from Mike.
I've got a little video. There you are, Alan.
Mayor, would you like me to explain this item, or Madam Chairman?
Okay, I think we do have a technology glitch now.
Are we ready to go to item four? Four A, can all of you hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Mayor, or Madam Chairman, would you like me to give a quick explanation on this item?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes. Would you like me to explain this item?
Uh, yes, please. Can everybody else hear, Jerry, Cindy? Okay.
Yeah.
This is the companion item we mentioned earlier. This is the approval of the financing transaction by the issuer, the Durant City Utilities Authority. Basically, the same explanation we had on the resolution on the city side. I will note that we'll need to fill in the blanks in your resolution based on the bid we received today. The blank for the purchaser would be First United Bank, and the rate on the transaction we filled in at 3.00 percent. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, are we ready for a motion? Do we have a motion?
Move to resolution 2020-10, listing the purchaser as First United Bank at a rate of 3 percent.
Did you get that, Cindy?
Yes, that was Vice Chairman Brittingham.
Yes. We have a, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Would the secretary please record the vote?
Trustee Shear?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Aye.
Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Aye.
Chairman Groby?
Aye, motion carries.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I make the motion adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn out of the Utility Authority? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Did you get that, Cindy?
I, I, I think that was that trustee Shear that gave the motion?
Yes.
And who seconded?
I did send it.
It was Steve.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Shear?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Aye.
Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Aye.
Chairman Groby?
Aye, we are now adjourned out of the Utility Authority.
Would the clerk please record the vote?
Okay, my screen froze. What time did you give for this?
Uh, 6:40.
Okay.
I'm sorry, wait, let's back up. I can now, Cindy, the time is 6:50.
6:50, all right, thank you. Trustee Shear?
Present.
Trustee Tomlinson? Trustee Morris?
Here.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Yeah.
Chairman Groby?
Here, we're all here, so we have a quorum. I order of business, the only thing we have under one is consent item to approve the minutes of the March 10th meeting. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion with three minutes.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Okay.
Record the vote.
Trustee Shear?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Aye.
Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Aye.
Chairman Groby?
Aye. Our next item is information items. If anyone has any questions on the airport monthly report?
Hello. I do.
I knew you would, okay?
One, I saw where the paint, we're having a problem with paint on the runways. What's, what's the status on that?
I don't know. I do not.
James? Are we holding the contractor to it?
When they came out for the final inspection, there were some areas that they were gonna have to redo that paint, because when they applied it, they didn't get it, just like they should. So the contractor is supposed to get back with us on that. That's a thermoplastic type paint, so the conditions have to be just right for that to adhere properly. And on the south end of the runway, there were some places where it had not adhered as well as it should, so.
Same like contractor should have been aware of that, and that's kind of disappointing.
They were rushing to get that open, and they did some of that at night. But when we did our walkthrough on our final inspection, it was made aware of the fact that that was gonna have to be redone.
Have they been paid lately yet?
I do not know.
Where are we on the under dock tank?
We are to the point that we've looked at it, we think we need to go ahead and buy a tank. We have a meeting tomorrow, and we may get some money from the FAA cares. $67,000 range that could help go toward the fuel, which would be good, because it's gonna run us a couple hundred thousand dollars, is what we're anticipating for the engineering and the actual tank and the transportation here and hooking all that up. It's, it's gonna be quite a bit of money.
Do we have a tank located?
There's one in Ohio, 12,000 gallon tank.
Have we, have we, are they building it, or is this?
It was built already.
So we made the deal on that?
We have not.
We have not, because of the specs of the tank. We don't know if they meet the specs for Oklahoma. Katie has contacted an engineer firm, our current engineer firm does not do fuel tanks, so we've actually engaged another engineering company to actually spec that out for us and ensure that it meets the Oklahoma specs. So we are moving forward. So what we usually thought was gonna be.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's correct. LBR, who the engineer, like John was saying, they, they're not, they cannot do the tank, but they have helped us and put us in touch with people, so we're moving forward. It's just, it's taking longer than we want to.
Any other questions, Mr. James? Okay.
Thanks.
James, thank you so much. Okay, we have nothing under administration. We have no, any new business? If not, do we hear a motion? We have a motion for adjournment?
Make the motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the secretary please record the vote?
Trustee Shear?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Aye.
Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Aye.
Chairman Groby?
Aye, we're all here, we have a quorum. All right, we adjourned. Now we are, we are adjourned, Cindy, out of the Airport Authority.
Okay.
It is now 6:57, it looks like, and we will go, move over into the Durant Development Authority. Would the secretary?
Are we back? My screen is frozen.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we're back, Cindy, and we are, have called to order the Durant Development Authority, and we need.
Trustee Shear?
Here.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Here. Here.
Trustee Morris?
Here.
Brittingham?
Here.
Chairman Groby?
Here, we're all here. There's nothing under consent really, other than approve the minutes. Yes, we ought to do that. Do we, we have, need to have, I'm trying to get this done so y'all freeze up for good up there. Do we have a motion to, under consent, to approve the minutes of the last meeting of January 14th?
Move to approve the consent items.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Would the secretary please record the vote?
Trustee Shear?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Aye.
Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Aye.
Chairman Groby?
Aye, we approve the consent items. Do we have under number three? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Would the secretary please record the vote?
Okay, I caught Vice Chairman Brittingham, I think, did the second. Could you tell me who did the motion, please?
I did, Danny.
Thank you. Trustee Shear?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlinson?
Aye.
Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brittingham?
Aye.
Chairman Groby?
Aye, we are now adjourned. Guys, I just got to say that everybody did good considering. This is something that's new to all of us, and I'm, I think we all did pretty good considering. Thank y'all all.
Mayor, you did a good job leading us through it. Well done.
Thank you, Alan. Good evening, Chris.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening.
Y'all too. Hope y'all don't get any snow up in your area. Are they predicting?
Yeah, we got, we actually got some last night.
I thought you did.
It was, it was, it was a dusting at best.